Good morning, everybody. It is 8:30. We'll call this morning's meeting for Tuesday, July 6th to order, and the first item is the approval of the agenda. We have a motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Mojo. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. Citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens to be heard today? Anything online that you know of? Glean, there's nobody that you know of online for citizens to be heard? Okay. All right, we have employee recognitions. All right, our first recognition today is for Kent Severson for 20 years of service, and I understand Kent will not be here this morning. So Kathy, do you want to give this and maybe say a word?
Sure. Okay. Thank you. Sorry, Kent was intending to come, but he had an emergency this morning. So Kent is the Director of our Food Pool and Lodging, all of Public Health, Environmental Health Services, and he's also in charge of the program. Our Food Pool and Lodging is also in Otter Tail and in Wilken County, that it's a delegated agreement from the state. So Kent has to support the program throughout all of those counties as well, and along with his onsite septic systems and plan reviews, and he's on the go constantly. He's got the right personality to deal with all of the individuals he has to deal with, and he's really dependable, professional. So unfortunately, I wish he could be here, but I'll accept it on his behalf. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. All right, next we have Charles Swedberg, a correctional officer. Justin, looks like you're going to come up. I don't know if you want to make any comments too, but Justin, I understand that Charles is not here.
It doesn't look like it.
It doesn't look that Charles is here. So this is presented in for 20 years of outstanding and dedicated service, and make sure you tell him thank you on behalf of our board.
I will. So yeah, Chuck's been with us for quite some time now. He is currently serving as a sergeant with us, was a big part of the new correctional facility. Chuck was a part of the transition team, so he had a big hand to play in how that facility final design was and all of its policies and procedures. So he's got a wealth of knowledge behind him. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Justin. And we have Tammy Gerke here, 35 years. Wow. This is presented in grateful recognition for 35 years of outstanding and dedicated service to Clay County unit citizens. Congratulations on your 35 years.
Thank you.
Sandy.
Yeah. Okay, so the scary part is I remember every one of those 35 years because I remember when Tammy started here. She was newlywed, and I think you started and worked for a couple of days, and then you had to take a little time off. Yeah, interesting. But Tammy's worked her way up in our unit. She's had three different positions and is currently a collections officer, so she works at collecting county debt for lots of different departments in our county. You've been doing that for a long, long time now, probably about 20 years at least. Does an excellent job. She's my go-to for asking questions. If I don't know something about collections, I know that she does, or she can find the answer. So she's quite the asset to Clay County. We're lucky to have her.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the approval of the bills and vouchers.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ebbinger, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carried. You have before you the minutes from June 15th.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Ebbinger. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carried. We'll move to our 8:35 item, and Justin, you want to come up? You have a request to fill a vacancy.
Yes, good morning.
Full-time? Okay. Good morning.
So I had another resignation, requesting to fill a position, maybe to do a decision to go back to college, changing his career outlook. So that is a legitimate position and within our DLC staffing plan.
I'd like to make the comment. I wish we didn't have to have you come before us to do these things, but I think it's also important that we always keep and are able to see just what's going on in your area of personnel and the need to constantly be publicly looking for people to help in that area. So it's unfortunate that you have to come to us, but at the same point, I think it probably does good for everybody to hear about this turnover, and hopefully we can find ways to improve that.
Yeah, we'll get through this and I don't anticipate continuing this.
Good, good. Commissioner Ebbinger.
Justin, what, how, are you getting positions filled that we've been approving?
Yes, I think we are since the last time I came in front of the board, like three, you know, a little bit later, Chris July, that we are seeing more applicants coming in and they're getting them filled.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kaylee.
I was just pointing that your mic's off, that's all.
Sorry.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Ebbinger. Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. Justin, in terms of your budget with so many unfilled positions for a significant amount of time, what are you, what are you looking at that being towards the end of the month, or the year, I'm sorry?
I think as far as salaries are concerned, there's going to be quite a bit of cost savings. However, you know, we've had to use a lot of overtime to fill these short positions. So I still anticipate there's going to be quite a bit of cost savings, not only in salaries, but there's, you know, the benefits and everything that go with them. So I think we will see our budget under budget for the year.
And I think that's maybe a broader issue for all of the county in terms of open positions, and I know Darren's here. We'll have to make sure and track that to see if it's, if there is such a balance of unused funds, it may be worth our while to spend more money on advertising or recruitment of individuals as this employment shortage goes on. You're not the only one that sees it, but.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign? Motion carried. All right, Justin. All right, our 8:40 is a COVID-19 update. Kathy and Jamie are here again, and Kathy and Jamie, I kind of asked our board members individually this morning if they think it was necessary for you to come forward anymore after today, and I think we can, we're hopeful that today can be your last COVID report to us on a bi-weekly basis now, and hopefully, unless you find it important, have something important to come forward. I think today we can probably have this be your last one. I know you have better things to do, so.
But I think the conversation that I, the point I had, Mr. Chair, is that you've done such a great job with making sure the public is informed through social media, through news outlets, that you really created an avenue to get the information out, and I agree with you. I think that if something large comes up, you can always have the opportunity to come forward, but for now, we'll give you that morning off.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. We handed out the update that shows the cumulative cases, not a significant change at all. From the end of June, the deaths in Clay County are at 92, so no, no changes in the deaths, just a few in Minnesota across the state, and the numbers of out of isolation are the cumulative deaths and those that then finished their isolation. And so we only have 11 active cases. We had 15 at the end of June. So we're really, the numbers are remaining great, and that's good. The number of people getting immunized are providing that immunity, so it's, it's good that we haven't had any ramp-up. Of course, they're looking at the variant strains that are occurring in different parts of the country as well, but right now, it's looking good for us. The cases per week are showing, just the graph down below, as we always look at when they've peaked and how they've been going down. Age cases on the next page, so the number of active cases by age range, and then the cumulative cases. So you're seeing just, you know, again, the small number of cases are really not showing a large number. Highest is 15 to 19, but it's not significantly more than kind of across the spectrum. Cumulatively, it's been the 20 to the 24-year-olds. It's been at the highest cumulatively for number of cases. And then I think Jamie can, will give the vaccine administration update.
Morning. As Kathy mentioned, the cases are down, but the virus continues to be in the community, and we do get updates weekly from the Minnesota Department of Health on what the lab is looking at in terms of variants. But they're seeing good control with the vaccine, and the number of individuals who are vaccinated continue to grow. The data shows in Clay County, people with at least one vaccine dose at 56% right now, and then people with a completed vaccine series at 53%. And then we've got the breakdown there for the age groups and opportunities for growth in that. And just to let you know what's going on, there are lots of opportunities in the community. Our Sanford Essentia and our local pharmacies continue to provide opportunities for COVID vaccine, and Clay County Public Health continues to make that a priority. So we've been doing one clinic a week. Our response is low because of opportunities available and the number of people that have been vaccinated. This week, we have a clinic on Wednesday, and that is from 10 to 2, 10 to 2:00 p.m., and we are providing vaccines, Pfizer vaccine available for anyone 12 and older, and we have the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine for anyone 18 years of age and older. We advertised last week, and the media was able to post that for us, and we are encouraging people to register, but also accepting walk-ins for those clinics as well to make it as easy as possible for people. And our staff continue to work with the universities and also the K-12 schools to provide vaccine. We've been, in the Morehead School District, we have two dates scheduled for next week at the DGF school and planning for the universities as students come back. So still busy with vaccine and it a priority for public health.
Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. In terms of the testing site, I'm looking back at the last four weeks, and you really have only had maybe one, no more than one each week of a positive case there. What are you hearing from the state in terms of reallocating of resources?
Minnesota Department of Health put out new guidance last week, basically still saying that priority is testing. So there was some guidance that really talked about those that are vaccinated and those that are, that are not vaccinated. So for those that have been vaccinated, they're saying if you have symptoms, you should get tested immediately. If you've been exposed and, you know, you've been vaccinated, you don't need to get tested unless you develop symptoms. And then for international travel, even if you've been vaccinated, that you get tested prior to or after. So they're, they're not telling us that they won't continue to support our site.
Yeah, and actually, Commissioner Mojo, they're, they are going to continue our site. We were one, I think they only closed down two sites across the state, so I believe we have a few, and Morehead is one of them. They'll continue. They haven't given us an end date, but we're going to continue on through the summer. So that's good news, that we still have the opportunity to provide this saliva testing site.
And then I do have a follow-up question, transitioning a little bit, but still on the vaccination route. We had planned for vaccine storage early on, and I know that it wasn't really an issue for us in the first few months of this year, just because as soon as we got it, it was going out. But now that I'm seeing, or you're doing a great job of administering, but I'm sure that you have maybe a little bit of a surplus of the vaccine versus who's coming forward. Is that storage that you have continuing to be adequate?
Yes, Commissioner Mojo. We had purchased a, an extra freezer with the CARES funding, and also a refrigerator, an extra refrigerator. So those have proved to be adequate. A lot of our vaccine was stored at our regional site, so we were able to just request vaccine as needed. So they were able to store in the ultra-cold storage at the regional site. So it helped that we didn't, weren't overloaded with our storage locally. So we're able to get that vaccine right away. It's, it's just out of Otter Tail, so. But those two, with the extra fridge and their extra refrigeration, has proven to be adequate for the vaccine we need.
Okay. So as we move forward, we've been clear to make sure and address any needs that arise because of COVID, make sure, and if there is a gap of something that you're missing, make sure and communicate that to Steve, and we'll work, work with the American Rescue Funds to distribute if needed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do want to mention that the governor did put out his press release that said 70%. They met 70% of people vaccinated across the state by July 4th. So they don't have the updated data. That's why we don't have that 70% number on our data. They have not updated that yet. I suspect that will happen this week, but he was pleased to say that Minnesota met that 70% percentage of vaccines. So that was a good thing.
All right. Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Kathy, you got to stick around for one more here, don't you?
Yes.
All right, next we have a request to apply for a Minnesota Department of Human Services grant.
Okay, so we are looking at this request for proposals and have met a few times with just a small number of people, including our county administrator and Brian Milton as well, to talk about the grant. It is similar to what we had replied to in 2018. So some of the information that they're requesting is very similar. So we're able to utilize our previous RFP. This is for a Behavioral Health Crisis Center, and it's to provide mental health and substance use disorder services. So we talked at length about, for sure, the substance use disorder through our detoxification facility. We definitely need some, a new facility, and we also talked at length about the mental health piece as well. And at this time, we certainly will apply, or if the board so approves, will apply for the proposal to furnish, equip, rehab, or construct a facility for the substance use disorder services. The Minnesota Legislature had $10 million to appropriate, appropriate, and so the maximum you can request is $5 million. So if they give $5 million to, oh, that means just two awards will be given. If they give less per project, then there may be more. So it's, it's going to be really competitive. The grant is due August 6th. We aren't required, there was a few of us on the responders conference, we're not required to submit a formal architectural design, so we can certainly pull from the previous one that we had utilized for 2018. So there won't be additional funds that are needed for a formal architectural design. They were clear that they would work with whoever was awarded on what kind of facility and building. So that would be a project in progress. So, so that's, that's a good thing, that we don't have to put out any additional funds for that. Is there any questions or any additional information from the, from the other committee members?
Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate the work that goes into these grant proposals. I've said a lot that I am not a grant writer, and I really appreciate the hard work that goes into those applications. So thanks to the team for pulling from the file from 2018 and getting a start on that. Also, just a comment, I know we've talked at length at this board about the, the substance use issue in our community that is not going away, that is really getting worse, and our county attorney's office can speak to that as well. We have talked at the American Rescue Committee about the needs in the community, and specifically during the pandemic, how we saw spikes in that. As we move forward, we do have a standing detox planning committee that Commissioner Gross and I, I believe are on, and feel free to have us meet to hammer out any details or needs that you have. I'm really hopeful that, that there will be some funds directed this way, because I think Clay County has a really good track record of addressing these needs, but also addressing the mental health needs that may be underlying with the individuals. So best of luck as you submit this.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? Well, Kathy, good luck, and I hope that we're successful this time around.
Absolutely, hopefully so. Thank you very much.
All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same? Motion carried.
Okay, appreciate it. Thanks.
All right. Mr. Rosenberg, come on up. You got a couple of things for us.
Couple of things, Mr. Chairman.
The first one is a request for approval for soft costs for the Resource Recovery Campus, and we do have information in our packet regarding that, I believe.
I think I included that.
I do.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to share with you, first of all, I had a birthday on Friday, and I'd like to think I'm wiser by a year, but I've found as I get older, I have more questions and fewer answers. So I don't know if that applies to the rest of you or not, but that's the way it is with me. With that, the, the soft costs, as we talked about, the approving of soft costs, essentially the soft costs are the fee that we've already approved for the consultant that helps us oversee the project, that's Burns &amp; Mack. It also includes the land purchase from City of Morehead, and it also includes the equipment that we're going to be buying at the, the transfer station. The, the equipment that we're buying at the transfer station is primarily, we're going to be taking over the transportation of the garbage once it leaves the transfer station to Purim and also to the landfill. So the, the, the equipment will include three transfer trailers, a couple of semi-tractors. We also are looking at trying to purchase a shredder to make sure that the bulky material, we can handle that better and manage that better and more appropriately. So that's the reason for those big numbers. But that's essentially, as you see on the sheet, the soft cost is about $2.5 million, and so I ask that you approve that today.
I might want to, I might want to add that early on in our conversations, that equipment number, the original number was 1.3 million. There were, there were, I believe, three fairly significant light items that in talking with Morehead, we felt that was more of an investment on their part. So that's why you see that change from 1.3 million to 855,000 on that line item. But what we did do early on in this process, we did not have any, any owner contingency, and that was probably, we, we need to have some owner contingency. So you notice that, that number down on the bottom, we kept that money and transferred it to owner contingency, just to be on the safe side in the event that there's something during this process that we determine needs change that would have been outside of the original GMP, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, and if we don't use that, that comes back to us. For example, in our law enforcement center, when we, when we constructed that facility, I think our entire owner's contingency was returned, I think, if I recall correctly. So we'll hopefully, and then also, you'll notice that 42,000 minus sign there. That's, that's where we did make the change on the overhead lighting, right?
Mr. Chairman, that's correct. That's.
It's actually not part of the gray cost, but.
Right. That's, that'll come up next.
But it's on the, yeah, okay. Okay, good. That's, do we have any questions on the soft costs? You think you're pretty well-covered there?
Mr. Chairman, I certainly hope so.
Putting you on the hook here, you know.
It's not the first time you've done that to me, Mr. Chairman. I probably won't be the last either.
All right, we have a motion to approve the soft cost by Commissioner Gross.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Commissioner Mojo, and of course, then that would, Steve, that really completes our total anticipated cost of the project. So a little bit later this morning, we're going to be talking about the bonding issue, and so this kind of all ties in to wrap that up. All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carried. All right, we'll move on to the amendment of the guaranteed maximum price, and that's this 42,000.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that's, that's good news. Anytime you can save some money on a project, that's good news. Through the value engineering with Burns &amp; Mack and also a construction engineer, we took a look at the overall project, and we decided that we would not be putting skylights into the transfer station itself. The main reason why that is, is that these transfer stations can get kind of dusty and musty, and we thought that cleaning those things or keeping the skylights clean would be kind of a challenge. So we decided to take them out, and it resulted in a savings of about $42,000 from the guaranteed maximum price. So what you have before you today is an amendment to the guaranteed maximum price, and the guaranteed maximum price will go down significantly, well, not significantly, $42,000 to $18,363,677.
We did talk about this at the construction meeting, and I also want to extend my thanks to you and the team for the value engineering that has gone in. We've really, building costs have gone up, but I think we've able, been able to mitigate it to a, a point with that engineering, so thank you for that.
I also want to add that, and it's not part of our presentation today, but there was a, another significant change to, if you recall, we had some discussion earlier about the value engineering regarding the access, and there was a potential savings of $500,000 by moving that entrance to 15th. And at the point when we first were presented that, there was, there was some concern, it was concern on my part that we had not visited with Morehead and Morehead Traffic Engineers on it, and I, but we did meet with them. They actually came to our, our last meeting, and they actually prefer that. So, so certainly that, that's going to, that would be a change order, Steve and Kirk, to GMP number one, right? Because that was, the site work was in GMP one.
Right. Mr. Chairman, and essentially what's going on with that right now is that the, they've, they've done the drawings, the new drawings for the, the change. They submitted it to the cities. The city is reviewing it along with the, the whole package, and we should have an answer back from them, I'd say, within the next week or two. So at that point in time, as you're, as you're correct, Mr. Chairman, I'll be coming back again. I know that you like seeing this pleasant face, but I'll be coming back again. And again, it'll be with a positive news, with a change order of savings of a significant amount of money.
I know Ben from Construction Engineers felt it would be at least 500,000, possibly even more. So we'll see how that goes, but that's, that's to come as well. So that number that we have there, the 20,904, would also be reduced by another potentially $500,000. All right, did we have a motion? We didn't have a motion on this one, did we?
Some of.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify. Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same? Motion carried. And then numbers, item number seven, a request for approval of construction support services with Burns and McDonald Engineering.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it's, we've already approved the 3% fee that we, will be paying them. The 3% will be on the gross maximum price. The, it did turn into be kind of a classic goat rodeo. There was some confusion about the acceptable amount for a limited liability. Ryan and myself worked pretty hard on that, and the limited liability is consistent with the other projects that we have in the county. So I think we're all pretty satisfied with that number.
Very good. So the request is to approve the contract with Burns and Mack with $5 million liability.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
I'll move.
Motion by Commissioner Mojo.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Abinger. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carried. And then, thank you, Kirk.
Very good. I just wanted to point out that they're busy at work out there. If you drive by there, they're moving topsoil, and they hope to be moving the construction trailer in. They were hoping today, but fortunately, we got some rain, so there'll probably be later this week when they'll be moving the construction trailer in. So we're making progress. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Steve, you're going to take this next item. Request to allow Commissioners Campbell and Mojo, the authorized, to authorize purchases, projects, changes up to $50,000 for this same resource recovery project.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Thank you for having me here this morning. We are looking with, with the construction project started, as Kirk had just mentioned, we'll begin to have owners' meetings every two weeks. We actually started here about, well, a week, a week or so ago. We'll beginning to meet every Monday, and through that process, kind of get an overview of the project. We'll be looking out at the next three weeks of that project and getting updates. And one of the pieces of that is the changes that we saw this morning and will be seen here moving forward. We come before that, before this board, looking for that request. There are different times, though, that based on the need of the project of continuing, holding it back, there may be times where we need to give approval during those board, during those owners' meetings to move forward, prior to coming forward to this board. And what we've done in previous projects is allow the Commissioners on that committee to provide up to a certain dollar amount moving forward. With the, with the changes and the challenges of finding some construction material, it's even more important during this project. And so the request before you this morning would, would be for Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Mojo to have the authority to make changes in the project or purchases up to $50,000 prior to receiving this board's approval, with the understanding that that, that next board meeting, that issue would be coming forward for your approval. With that, I'd yield for any questions.
Questions? I know, I know too, within the GMP, there's a, I believe there's like 800 and some thousand dollars in the GMP that it would be contractor contingency dollars, and those contract contingencies, even though they can use them as they, as they want, they, they usually will bring it before our committee for approval. Just on a side note, because that, technically, that 855,000 is, is unused. It's planned right now as unused dollars, and of course, those, if they're not used, go back to the county, so they're technically still our dollars within that GMP. So, you know, just as side note, I'm kind of mentioning this more for Commissioner Kaylee and Commissioner Abinger being new on here with the construction projects, that, that that's how that works too. And I don't know that in the previous construction projects, I know it was Commissioner Wayland and I that had that authority on the, on these projects, and I don't know that it was ever used a whole lot. But I do think that there's times when, especially under the circumstances we're at now with demands, that it's probably a good idea that, that we have the ability to do that, instead of having to wait for the, another board meeting. And of course, if it's, if it's after, our meetings are on Monday, and if we meet Tuesday, I suppose it could be done then, but...
Is this the same as a change order, something that you can do a change order type thing on a, on a project?
Well, yeah, right, right.
I mean, normally, someone doesn't come to us with a change order.
Right. Yeah, so this, Commissioner Gross, this request would be something out of the ordinary that's found that, that was not in the original plan. It could be something that, that our owner contingency would be about, but there still is the, you know, having the availability of the product or having the availability of the service to not hold the project up. I think that's kind of what we're looking for here.
I mean, not that I don't trust you two on the committee, I mean, and stuff like that, but it just seems like a big amount to, to approve something.
Commissioner Mojo.
So I think maybe a, a good example, last week was a fifth Tuesday, and as a construction committee, we had met and heard from construction engineers that they nicked a water pipe, and there was some added costs that had to happen to make sure to fix that. If, if there's a situation like that, and they need to have the commission's approval on that, there could have been almost two weeks where they would not have been able to fix that without board approval. It certainly is not something that is a given, and I recall maybe used once on the jail project, but it's just an option in case a large item comes that needs approval. And I think the piece of it is, it is a large amount, but it would be used to save a substantial amount, and certainly would be interested in, in bringing that lower if you had more confidence in that. We, I believe, allowed the CARES Act committee up to $50,000 at their discretion under the same sort of agreement, just to make sure that we weren't holding funds back that were vital to completion.
I guess I can go along with, I mean, I'll go along with that explanation, but next question would be, why did we go to 100,000? You know, I just...
Well, I think, I, to be honest with you, I think, I think that was the request originally by, by our administrator, and, and Commissioner Mojo and I just backed that down. We felt 50 would be appropriate.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Abinger. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carried, and we're hoping we won't have to use it at all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. All right, next. Joe, is that your, this is yours. Request to increase rent on family service center by 50 cents a square foot starting January of 2022.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair, board members. This was, before Georgia left, she had been working on this for a while. She had prepped all the tenants, non-tenant and county tenants, that this was something in the, in the works. Did a little research, average cost is 12 and a half dollars to 15 per square foot. I think our goal is to not compete with the public and, and stuff, so that was one reason why we would like to up this. The other one is just we have not had an increase in many, many years, and just to keep up with the times. That's, that's what we were, we were proposing. So basically, it would be bringing in a total revenue cost of 49,903. If you're looking at straight up family service center revenue cost, but if you're looking at the county as a whole, non-county tenants would bring in just under 20,000, 19, 19,940, so. And then the county tenant departments would, would budget for about 29,963, so. Questions on this?
Questions?
Motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Mojo, we have a question by Commissioner Abinger.
Joe, what, what do we charge per square foot now?
Uh, right now, the first floor get, is at 13,25 a square foot, second floor is at 12,25 a square foot. So we'd be taking that up 50 cents.
Thanks.
Yep.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same? Motion carried. All right, that one's done.
Yep, and then we...
Improvement?
Well, he has a second.
Yeah, I was just going to mention, I have six different contracts that are up. Normally, this goes consent, but obviously, I wanted to get board approval of the 50 cent first, so...
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve the renewal leases presented.
We have a motion to approve the leases.
Second.
And a second. Motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Kaylee. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carried. All right, now we can get into the capital plan.
Yes. So what I have here, I guess, timing wise, is this was kind of a deadline for me to bring to the board. If you look in your handout, we've come to a total project costs, our total estimated cost at 3,094,647. So part of this process, we identified some CARES projects. You can see highlighted and read there. So today, I would be asking to add that $3 million number to the capital, move forward with capital plan on that. And the rest of that highlighted area in red would be, would, would go through that CARES process, through the committee and stuff.
So the, just to be clear, the, under our capital plan, the items in red would still be considered part of our capital improvement plan.
Correct.
It's just that the funding source would be different than, anticipate right now to be different than through bond.
Yes, correct, yep. Total capital plan is 4,448, 048,397, so.
Right. Is that correct, Steve? That's how we'd want to approve that. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
Do we know we're sure that those CARE, those projects would be covered by CARE projects?
Yeah, we've, we've looked at all of them. Actually, the, just about every one of them on there is heating and cooling, HVAC, venting, so we know that one's a slam dunk on that one. As far as the generator project, that's the one where we looked into. Definitely serves the building that, that houses all our vaccines and stuff, so.
Okay.
So, yeah, they, they all, we feel they all qualify.
So I know Commissioner Gross, Joe and his work, when we were in our capital improvement committee meeting, he would, he brought before us, and he even referenced where within the federal guideline, guidelines each of those would qualify under. So I think Joe's done a pretty, pretty good job, and, and I don't know if Brian had an opportunity to review that, but I'm assuming that it's good. Okay. All right, so we have a request to approve the 3,000, or 3,94,647, and the 953,750 as the capital improvement, as a portion of the capital improvement plan moving forward for the bond. And I see that we have Eilers on, on here now. I don't know, I don't know if we have, Todd, is that correct?
Yeah.
I'm assuming that, that this resolution will be what we need to have in terms of categorizing our capital improvement plan that we would do the bond for. Is that correct?
Yeah, thank you, Steve. Board chair, board members, Todd Hagan from Eilers and Associates. This part of the project is under a capital improvement plan, like Joe had talked about. I know we've got some solid waste projects coming up as well, but this one needs to follow a process. So we're calling a public hearing this morning, and then in between now and putting the notice in the paper, Eilers will prepare with, you know, the assistance of county staff, a capital improvement plan that's more for financing than probably what you've got on file. So we have to follow, you've done this before, a few years past, just follow state law and the bonding parameters for a capital improvement plan. So we'll extract all those details out as best we can. I'll send Steve and Lori and the folks at, at the county to review our plan. It's almost done right now, and just to kind of put in some of the project details you had mentioned. Not super details, but just need to know under state law what we're financing, and it's got to follow those parameters. So, and then we're looking at a public hearing on August 10th, I believe, on the schedule. We'll probably put this bond together with the solid waste somewhere around August 10th, and then sort of these two bonds will follow each other for a bond sale in the middle of September. So this is a, what we need to do ahead of a capital improvement plan bond issue. So it takes a little bit longer to run this through than some of your other bonds you've issued that don't need this kind of preliminary process. So hopefully I answered your question on that, but I yield back to you folks.
All right, thank you, Todd. So I think the first action would be to move forward with this capital improvement plan, and then we would get into establishing the public hearing process, so.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Gross to approve the facility's capital plan.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Abinger. Any further discussion? Commissioner Kaylee?
Um, and just to clarify for the public, when we're saying CARES projects, that's really from the ARPA funds, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, we were just kind of short.
Right, but, just to make it clear.
They're from the American Recovers. Good point. Okay, any further discussion? I think on the capital improvement plan, I think we'll call for a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Abinger?
Aye.
Mr. Kaylee?
Aye.
Mr. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mojo?
Aye.
Mr. Campbell?
Aye. All right, motion carried. All right, now we have before us the attachment number N, which is the resolution that, and this is what Mr. Hagan has been talking about, establishing the dates or the calling of the hearing. I think you've pretty much said what you've needed to say, haven't you, Todd, for, for that purpose?
Yep, yep. If you have any questions, feel free to ask, but yeah, I just try to summarize how those two dovetail together and kind of talked about how they, how they differ. So this is kind of the bonding process for, for that 3,94,000 part of the CIP that we're bonding for. Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-27.
All right, motion by Commissioner Mojo.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Abinger. And this one, I think also, we would want to have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Abinger?
Aye.
Mr. Kaylee?
Aye.
Mr. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mojo?
Aye.
Mr. Campbell?
Aye. All right, thank you, Todd.
Yep, thanks for having me.
Yep.
Bye-bye.
Okay. Get it here, there we go. All right, I guess we're into our committee reports, and we have a two-week period, I guess, to do this time. And if I'm not mistaken, I started to my left last time, so I'm going to start to my right this time. Commissioner Gross, would you like to start?
Sure. Couple of things I attended was probably two retirements with Carolyn Stenard on the 30th and July 1st with Julie Savat, a couple of retirements that I went out to, participated in the Hit It All Community festivities. Also, I had a meeting with, well, it's a part of the Partnership for Health with Shaq. They got an acronym that you can make two words out of, I think, it's sort of long, but a lot of, it was a state committee that I'm on, and, and just a lot of discussion on the, the main thing I got, I have all the ship funds, they say, are still in the... the main thing I got, I love the ship funds, they say they're still in, uh, good shape yet. But the one thing they were concerned about was, um, the incentives that were given for shots. You know, are, are people sitting back and say, well, there's something better coming along? So, uh, I mean, that was, that was a concern that, uh, I'll, I'll wait, you know, and, you know, I don't want the baseball tickets, I want more stuff, you know, so, uh, I guess they were concerned about that. Should they offer incentives or shouldn't they, you know, or are you just gonna wait for more and stuff like that, so? Those are my committee meetings.
Thank you. Commissioner Mojo?
Thank you. I, on June twenty-second, attended the Clay County Planning Commission meeting. At that meeting, we had two public hearings. One was a request for a conditional use permit from BRD Dog LLC, a storage unit, on the north side of the Convent Road in Morehead Township, that there was some discussion on future arterial road needs, but that, that did, uh, receive approval. The second open, or public meeting was a application from Westland Materials, a request from inter, uh, interim use permit request for a thirty-nine and a half acre gravel mining operation in Keene Township that, uh, was also approved. There was discussion on road access and, um, the residents as long, as, as well as the county, um, highway department were in approval of that request. We had a update from Adam Altenberg from MetroCog on the Clay County Comprehensive Plan, how that is moving forward. And, uh, Matt Jacobson talked about the public meeting law changes that will go into effect. That week, I also attended the Prairie Lakes, uh, Solid Waste Resource Recovery Meeting. I re, uh, attended virtually. There was a long, vibrant discussion on insurance of that facility that continues to be an issue. Mr. Campbell can, can further any discussion on that? I attended the Solid Waste Advisory Committee meeting at the landfill and tour. My thanks goes out to the landfill staff. The facility, uh, really looks great. They've done a great job with the public drop-off area. That was something that stemmed out of, uh, concerns from the public that really makes for smooth transfer materials. And then also the grounds look great from, um, staff use. The expansion, I think if you haven't had an opportunity to go out and see the expansion, it's really, really something how they've addressed the needs there.
I attended the, sorry, Morehead Clay County Joint Powers Authority meeting on the twenty-fourth. Talked about the property acquisition status reports, uh, took action on the Drayton Dam Environmental Assessment Worksheet. I did have concerns, uh, with the entity, um, the, our entity approving that just because we are so far away from, from the actual, um, physical location of that. But, uh, staff did assure the board that, that there had been substantial local outreach and conversations with that. Uh, took action on a hunting lease and purchase agreement modification and talked about, uh, negotiations on another parcel and, uh, took action on a relocation cost claim. At Friday, I had a meeting, uh, for the Cass Clay Food Partners Committee. We had, or I had discussion with a University of North Dakota Extension, um, employee and in terms of food systems and how the Cass Clay Food Partners shifted during COVID to, uh, really a public outreach and making sure that the, um, the existing, um, services that were out there were communicated as well as possible to the community. And I, I really do think that, that they did a great job in, in their public messaging during that time. Monday, the, the next Monday, losing the date, uh, the twenty-eighth, I was in Fergus Falls for the Lakeland Mental Health, uh, Finance Committee meeting. We had discussion on allocations and different bank accounts that the facility operates. They've made a intentional, a decision to invest in banks in the cities that they have a physical presence. They, uh, there are eight cities and eight different banks. And they, because of their actions pre-COVID, really are in strong financial positions. So we talked about the, uh, the decision to not ask the counties for an increase on some of their services because of that and how we, um, address financial discussion, decisions going forward. After that, I attended the regular board meeting of that. We had a, a good update from the collaborative, the Clay County Collaborative. They talked a little bit about, uh, the Holly U and Hitterdall School contract now that, that they were able to get that, so they renewed that. Talked a little bit about a decrease in mental health initiative funding from Clay County. I wasn't, wasn't aware of that. I do have a meeting, uh, Rhonda Porter has requested a meeting, so I'll talk further with her on that. But, uh, the key program indicators look good. Uh, there's, um, continued need and use. And, um, all of the Morehead programs were in the black for, uh, May, which is something that, that you usually don't see with psychiatry. So that really gives you an, uh, understanding of the need. Uh, that afternoon, I came back, uh, and had a meeting with our highway department, with Commissioner Campbell. Uh, we have a county road project that has experienced some significant change orders and delays and had a long conversation with how the county goes forward with, uh, change orders in the future. If it needs to be something that, well, it definitely needs to be something that the county board approves prior to the bills being paid. But, uh, how those seek approval, whether it be at the highway tracking committee level first and then to the county board. So I think we'll have some more recommendations on what that policy looks like going forward. After that, I had the Solid Waste Construction Committee meeting. We, um, had that here because the work trailer's not set up yet at the construction site, but I think addressed the two major issues, or three major issues with our actions prior on this agenda. I attended the Clay County Local Work Group meeting with the NRCS and partner staff, which would be the Soil and Water Conservation District USDA. I also requested that our Clay County Planning Department and Clay County Highway Department be present. A really good conversation on what the priority, uh, resource concern areas are for Clay County. It's something that we have to identify every year. Changed a couple issues, um, on there particularly because of the drought conditions and what that means for the natural resources. Clay County's concerns, uh, always continue to be, um, noxious weed and soil erosion. We all know that, um, there was a significant amount of blowing through the spring because of dry fields and that once that topsoil is gone, it's, it's gone. So happy to be part of that discussion. And then I had a conversation, um, with our planning director, Matt Jacobson. After our planning commission meeting, it really struck me as, um, concerning that it seems to be that there's been a, a lack of citizen engagement on our comprehensive plan. And I think part of that is because you're doing a plan in the middle of a pandemic, but also because a large amount of the interaction had to happen virtually. And, uh, it really encouraged him. I felt like we had a, um, good responses from some of our urban, um, partners and obviously had conversations with, uh, aggregate partners and natural resource partners, but was concerned that there is a lack of rural representation from our rural citizens, rural cities and townships and have encouraged him to make sure that we have two more public engagement opportunities before the fall. So an invitation will be coming out shortly, I believe. We're looking at July twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, having it up, one up in Keene Township at maybe Listney Church, and then a second one, uh, in Barnesville, possibly at the watershed. Really feel like in order for us to move forward with an accurate planning document, we hear from as many people as possible. So, um, that concludes my reports.
Thank you. Commissioner Abinger?
On the twenty-third of June, uh, I, uh, attended the Diversion Authority Finance Meeting virtually. Executive Director Paulson presented a review of the budgets. No surprises there. John Shockley, the counsel for the, uh, Diversion Authority, uh, discussed, uh, memorandum of understandings that he's working on now. We had five, uh, that basically addressed easements and utility work for the diversion. Uh, the following day, on the twenty-fourth, uh, attended the Diversion Authority Board Meeting, uh, again, virtually. Executive Director Paulson discussed some of the media outreach, referenced the P-three and WFI activities we'd had earlier in the week, or, or later than the previous week. Uh, had nine hundred and ten media outlooks and ninety-six hundred views on various things that were released through the, media, or released to the media, uh, from the events we had the previous week. Talked about closing dates on the contracts involved in the project. For commercial close, it's sixty days and financial close will be in ninety days. Then, uh, John Shockley again reviewed two of the MOUs and we voted on resolutions for them. And that completes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Kaylee?
On June twenty-fourth, I attended the Clay County Collaborative meeting. I don't know if this is what Jenny was talking about, but the administrative group discussed the fiscal year twenty-two budget and recommended that the governance board carry over as many funds as possible into fiscal year twenty-three. And their concerns were based on a possible continued reduction in LCTS earnings and the possibility that social services may not contribute twenty thousand dollars to school-based mental health programs due to federal changes in case management. Is that the issue that you were talking about?
Yeah, it sounds like it. Thank you.
So that'll require some extra dollars. Uh, we looked at some different budget options and then, uh, approved the proposed budget that was recommended to us from that group. Jane, the LCTS coordinator, and that stands for Local Collaborative Time Study, is scheduling fall training sessions with schools. And Jane, Carolyn Sternad, the former collaborative coordinator, and Jill Ambul, who's the new, um, coordinator, will be meeting with social services staff to discuss the LCTS process and identify where changes can be made to, um, result in a higher collection of funds. Also, the collaborative website has been refreshed and updated, so all the recent minutes and things are on there now. Monday, June twenty-eighth, the Law Library Committee met. Um, we approved some minor changes in the bylaws and voted in Samantha Zimmerman as the new president. That same day, I went out to the highway department and met with David Overbow and Justin Sorem about, um, some overruns on a project and, and what happened there. Tuesday, June twenty-ninth, I went out to the landfill with Kirk Rosenberger, Shannon Thompson, and Brett Rice met us there and I got the tour. It is a beautiful facility. If you've never been out there, that is the nicest looking landfill I've ever seen. It was really interesting to hear how it's all engineered and all of the changes that they've made to make it, um, a really nice process for the public to drop things off and to get our materials handled in the most responsible way possible. Um, some of the things we talked about on that tour was contaminated soil and, and issues we have in dealing with that. There really is no good solution right now. We can put some of it in our landfill, but it's something to keep our eye on down the road. We might wanna look at some different ways of handling contaminated soil within our county in the future. We also talked about just the longevity of the landfill, leachate treatment and, um, some other issues as well. On Wednesday, June thirtieth, I also attended Carolyn Sternan's retirement with Commissioner Gross. Big thank you to social services, to Rhonda Porter, and also Kathy McKay for the lovely party and refreshment service that they did in Carolyn's honor. It was a really nice party. That concludes my reports.
All right, thank you. On, uh, June twenty-third, we had our Prairie Lakes Solid Waste Meeting. As Commissioner Mojo mentioned, the hot topic again was, or continues to be, the property insurance issue. Uh, but before I talk a little bit more about that, um, it's always good when you, when you have your plant superintendent give his report on how things are going, and I'm gonna almost try to quote what he said here. He said, "It's boring. Nothing going on here but burning garbage." You know, I thought that was a, compared to some of the reports that we've happened, having to give in the past, that there's been issues with, uh, one burner or the other. So the, the plant is really doing well right now. And, and I give, do give credit to Brian and his staff there, too. They do an incredible job with running that facility. Back to the, uh, uh, insurance issue. I think I reported before that we had hoped to, um, we had that survey done of our facility to find out, you know, how, what might be wrong with it or what might be, make it more difficult to insure. And that came back as, as, as kind of standard insurability that we, we met the tests for being able to be insured. If you recall, I think our goal was to, uh, hopefully have a new insurance policy in place by July first. That has not been able to happen yet. And if it would have happened, there would have been a significant, uh, premium penalty. And that was one of the things that we also wanted to avoid was that premium penalty, so. So then we, um, we decided that we needed to have a, uh, we'd get together of our property insurance. We have a subcommittee there, which I also serve on that. So on June thirtieth, uh, we met, uh, in, um, at the Becker County Courthouse. And the reason that we met there is, uh, Ben Grimsley, who was also a county commissioner in Becker County, actually serves on the MCIT board now. And so we, we wanted to get together with, with, uh, Mr. Grimsley and, and go over our concerns. So he would, you know, we just wanted to make sure, and he was very, already very knowledgeable on, on what was going on there. But, you know, for Commissioner, uh, Abinger and Commissioner Kaylee, uh, two years ago, MCIT just covered our property insurance. And then in two thousand, uh, late two thousand nineteen, we were told that they would no longer cover us in two thou, in twenty-twenty, of which then they did end up covering us, but they, they ended up, um, having a, a cost share of eighty-twenty. And then, and then in twenty-twenty-one, they said that they would no longer even do a cost share. And so that's where our budget went from what was once about eighty thousand dollars line item for property insurance for that facility to four hundred and eighty thousand, uh, as a result of this insurance issue. We, uh, there has been no final decision made on that. We talked to, um, we, we talked to Commissioner Grimsley about suggesting on our behalf that MCIT, MCIT still cover us, uh, or, or cost share at a fifty-fifty. When I said eighty-twenty, MCIT paid the eighty and we paid the twenty. And it went from eighty-twenty to them not paying anything in twenty, in twenty-twenty-one. And so that's still hasn't been determined. So our request now is for, through Ben would be to still request that they pay, um, fifty percent of that, of that premium. So that, and so he's gonna, they're meeting on July ninth, I believe it is, to, at MCIT to go over that. So it's an ongoing matter. Uh, ultimately, we will have a, a separate standalone policy outside of that. MCIT will still cover our workman's comp and, um, all other types of insurance vehicle insurance and all that for Prairie Lakes, but they will not cover the property insurance. Then, uh, on, um, the twenty-fourth, we had our, uh, as Commissioner Mojo mentioned, we had our, um, more Clay Joint Powers Authority relating to the diversion project. One positive note- Powers Authority relating to the diversion project. One positive note on that is that we did approve a negotiated settlement on the second of the four parcels that had anticipated going through eminent domain. So two of those four now, we've avoided that process. And there's, according to what I've been told, there's a third of those four who negotiations are going well right now and that there's the potential for that third one to also be resolved. In in regards to the issue with the Drayton Dam, and I understand Commissioner Mojo's concern about us being the ones that are, basically it was a motion to move forward with it without additional study based on the recommendations that came before us. And and the reason the reason that is, is because we, Clay County had to be or Clay County Joint Powers Board needed to be the ones who were the applicant during going through the process of EAW. And so required us to then deem that the EAW met its purpose without having to have further studies done. And that was done with full consultation with the Drayton area and the county commissions up in those areas. It was more of a process that needed to be done on by our group. And then on the 24th, we did meet at the landfill, and there's a lot of accolades going on in regards to the our landfill out there. And I I agree, and I really do like the new drop site. That's turned out to be something really positive. That's anybody who goes out there will benefit from from that moving forward. And we did have Tom from Construction Engineers was out there giving the SWAC committee a report on the camp recovery campus project as well. On the 28th, we had our recovery, resource recovery, construction meeting. And, you know, it was, I think it was recommended there that that we'll see coming forward again with that change in that $500,000 for that access point for coming off of 15th as opposed to 34th Street. On the 29th, I had an executive meeting of the diversion authority board, and we went over some of the same things that that Commissioner Ebber talked about and through his finance committee. We did talk about moving forward with the hiring of a finance director. It's it's kind of a really important process there. There was also some talk about a land and compliance officer being hired. There's some more discussion that's going to be done regarding that. There's obviously there's, now that this project is in full swing, there's an awful lot of coordination and and people don't realize that that all the communications and agreements that you have with all the different governing boards, whether it's township boards, counties and other jurisdictions, the state water commission in North Dakota, the DNR in Minnesota, they all have their stipulations that are done through these permits. And somebody needs to make sure that as we move forward, that we're abiding by all of these different contracts. And it's hard for one, you know, so it's almost a job for one person to have oversight of all that to make sure it's all being done. So that's that's the discussion that's going on there. And that concludes my report. I felt like I was talking for a week there. All right. Commissioner, Administrator Larson, your turn.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I'll just first start out by just addressing that on the 30th of this this month, the legislature did move forward to bring all the ominous bills to the governor's desk, which he did sign, which averted a partial shutdown. We spent a great deal of time over the last couple of weeks working with a number of our departments who would have been impacted should that partial shutdown have taken place. And so we're pleased that it didn't. Some of the highlights, I think, just to address, again, we are pleased to see that there are no changes to to county program aid. There was the ending of the peacetime emergencies that ended up being effective July 1. Social services and public health will have now 60 days to to comply with pre-COVID practices if they haven't been already changed by the legislature. And so Rhonda and Kathy have been working on that. One of the things that we talked about through the tax bill, one of the concerns that was brought forward with businesses that took the paycheck protection program, that their loans based on our state law, were going to have to be counted against their income tax. And the the tax bill did did allow that that full amount would not be connected to their income tax. So that was a benefit to our to our businesses. They're looking at a potential special session in September, and we'll we will see what happens there. Back on the 22nd, I did participate in a meeting with Troy Omits and Rhonda Porter, Kathy McKay and Mr. Melton in regards to the DHS grant that was before the board this morning. On the 23rd, we had county management. It was good to see. It was the first time in 477 days that our our firm full management group was together in person. And so we talked to, we had the vaccine updates. We talked some on the 2022 budget and state shutdown potential and remote work. We're also, one of the things that we are, we're going to be doing is if the board recalls, this past year, the state auditor deemed that our EAC committee was not an acceptable committee to to fund provide funding for. And it was a small dollar amount, but what we did was have some employee recognition. We did some different events throughout the year, and one of those events was a county picnic. Our our department heads felt that was an extremely valuable valuable thing that we do here at the county from a teamwork standpoint, getting getting us together. And so what our department heads have agreed to do is pay for that, pay for that picnic out of their own funds. And so we're looking to have a county picnic on August 24th here on the main campus. And so there'll be more information coming on that. And we'd like to invite our commissioners who have served served the food in previous years. If you would be willing to do that, we'd be happy to have you. On the 2030, I met with Mr. Melton and Rhonda Porter with the closing of the of two additional juvenile residential treatment programs that has been addressed here at the board. Rhonda and the courts are having some challenges in dealing with some of the youth that have been in those programs and also current kids that are needing placement. And so we're just having some both some, I guess, initial discussions on what to do with those those existing youth, but how best to move forward in the future. 2030, I also met with Joe Olson on a number of issues that were brought forward today. I also met with Matt Jacobson on an update on the comprehensive plan, and also met with the FM area administrators, talking about ARPA and the Red River Regional Dispatch Center. Participated that afternoon, participated in AMC ARPA meeting webinar where we heard a little bit more information on what we can do with the funding. On the 24th, participated in the SWAC meeting that's been covered by Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Mojo. Again, just they've done a great job out there. Looks wonderful. MCCJPA, again, participated that afternoon. Commissioner Campbell, Commissioner Mojo have addressed that. And then we also met again with representatives from from the city on the 15th Avenue access that afternoon. Also spoke with juvenile juvenile center staff. The Department of Correction has recently put out some orders that will go into play August 1st on impacts of the of restraints in the facility. And so the facility is working through those different different things. On the 28th, we had the closing of the storage unit. On the that afternoon, participated in the owners' meeting for the resource recovery that's been addressed by Commissioner Campbell, Commissioner Mojo, and met with Kirk after that meeting for a period of time. On the 29th, the STRIVE committee meeting met. We went through a remote work draft policy that was completed by Anna and Darren. And so just kind of a timeframe, I know some of our staff members are are have been asking, we're reviewing that. The STRIVE committee is reviewing the changes this week. It's going to our managers, the department heads on from the week of the 12th to the 16th. We're going to have a pick meeting on July 20th with hopefully a recommendation to this board on July 27th. And if we are able to move that up any any faster, we will look to do that. Let's see. On the 30th, I met with FM leadership in regards to the to the Red River Regional Dispatch Center. Again, there haven't been, there have been a lot of discussions that have taken place. I think there's a, I guess, some discussions that we've had about needing additional larger facility and additional staff. And recently, the the Cass County has come forward and said, in the event that something is done from a from a standpoint of facility, that they would be willing to act as the fiscal host. And so from a from a public standpoint, that is going to be a discussion at the Cass County board meeting this afternoon. And just to be clear to the commission, no decisions have been made on that. It's just the fact that in the event that we do move forward, Cass has has indicated they would be willing to act acted as host. On the 1st, I participated in arbitration with Darren Brooke and Mr. Melton in regards to the county attorney's contract. We're hoping to have a decision from the arbitrator here within the next month or so. That afternoon, I met with Troy Omits and Kathy McKay and having some discussions on staffing concerns that they're having in detox, most specifically with the nursing positions. That afternoon, I participated in Julie Savat's open house for her retirement. Just wanted to touch base. Again, the vaccine clinic that was mentioned earlier will be here at the Family Service Center on the 7th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. with Johnson Johnson and Pfizer. There is walk-ins or you can go online to our webpage and make an online registration. And lastly, just like to touch base, heard from from our sheriff over the weekend, the use of force has been a discussion that we've had here at the board level with North Dakota, the change in the law, North Dakota's inability to feel like they can come across from a liability standpoint. This past week, Minnesota Sheriff's Association, the Minnesota Chief of Police, Peace Officers Association, and the law enforcement labor services filed suit in Minnesota court to review the constitutionality of parts of the deadly force statute. And so they're hoping that that will come before the courts here within the next couple of weeks. So and that concludes my report.
Steve, would you care to give a little update on this DMV pilot program?
Certainly. So within one of the ominous bills this this past legislative session, there are two pilot projects that are two pilot counties that were selected to to have this project. The state is looking at being able to provide when you go into your license, rather than getting a sheet of paper that says your license is coming in weeks and potentially months later, is that they'll actually create it on the spot for the people when they come in. And so Clay County and Dakota County were selected as two of the two of the pilot projects. They receive receive funding. The first thing that we'll have to do is to make sure that with the actual licensing cards, that we have security set up properly within our within our facility. We feel pretty comfortable with the changes that we recently made out of our DMV that we're hoping that there's not going to be a great deal that we'll need to do. And and then again, they'll look, we're not looking until October of next year for that to start.
Sometime between July and October.
And and that will be then again be that be the pilot to see how that goes. I think they're looking to do that for about a year.
And that would be for a standard license?
Correct. So your enhanced your enhanced and and real IDs would have to you still would have to come into the into the DMV to get that.
But those would still be printed elsewhere?
Correct. Yes.
Thank you for that. Anything else? Brian, do you have anything else for us this morning?
I was gonna, I was glad Steve gave the update on the use of force piece. I was gonna say that the it sounds like the legislature in both houses approved an amendment to the language on the use of force. So I don't know if that still goes through any other committee process before it would potentially get signed, but it's part of the criminal justice bill. So there's that amendment piece. It sounded like originally that there was not going to be a lawsuit, at least that's the word that I had gotten through the County Attorneys Association, but it looks like as of Friday, they did file one from the different law enforcement associations. So we'll see where that continues to move through with the challenge of the constitutionality side of things.
All right. Colleen, anything for us?
All right. We are adjourned.